Good evening. Everyone can take their mics off of mute.
Ben is here.
He's here.
Okay, Bill Odika was on. Where did Bill go? Connecting now. Bill, can you hear us? Hey Bill, can you hear us? Bill, I think your microphone may be on mute.
No, I don't think he connected his audio.
Oh.
Bill, you have to connect your audio.
Hold the sign.
I just noticed if you hold down the spacebar, it turns on your audio for the duration of you're holding down the spacebar.
Oh, continue now.
At least mine does.
Bill just got off. I think he's back.
And he has one of those virtual backgrounds.
Ah. I don't know where he went.
I got some tech support.
As soon as Bill comes back, we can get going. And John, John Borden's here with me in town hall. Yes, present, John Borden. Bill. So, Bill, we're just waiting to hear from you.
Bill, you should try to log off and then log back on. And when you log on, there might be a prompt that comes up that says how you want to connect your audio. You have to select out of that box how you want to do the audio. If you don't hit it or cancel it, it doesn't let you connect audio. We're grateful for what is the ultimate in a minute.
Yeah, it was. He's reconnecting, so that might be the thing. So yeah, so Bill is trying to connect audio. We can see it. There we go. Bill, can you hear us? Just unmute, Bill, and you'll be good.
Alright, unmute.
Alright, we go. So, Bill, can you hear us?
You know what? I bet he plugged his headphones into the jack.
I bet you're right.
And now.
But she's getting his headphones back. Hey, Bill, can you hear us? Bill? Hey, Bill, are you there? It looks like it connected to audio.
Can you hear us, Bill? Give us a thumbs up if you can hear us.
Also, we can call her. He came with you, Mike? Now, he was going to be on the meeting.
I think it may be a headphones issue.
That's what I'm thinking it is.
I actually tried to use headphones last time. And I was able to test the mic and everything, and it wasn't working, so I.
Hey, Bill, can you hear us yet? Yeah, we gotta call him, tell him to stay. Bill, are you there?
No.
He's gonna unplug his headphones. It's probably what it is. You're right now.
Hey, Bill, it's Mike. Try, try unplugging the headset from the. Are you using a computer or your phone?
I almost barely hear him.
You gotta do it because we can see you. We can't hear you. Do we have to reset you? Hey, I think it's because we can see you fine, we can't hear you, and I don't think you can hear us. So I think it's an audio, an audio issue. Yeah, so try turning up the volume on your computer and unplugging the headset.
This thing's got a second jack on it.
Yeah.
Well, you can.
Yeah, we're good now.
Okay, good. Yeah, it's wrong plug. Okay, I just changed it. Okay, good enough. Thank you.
Alright, so Bill, you can hear us now? Hey, Bill? Hey, Bill, can you hear us? He can't hear us. Turn the volume up on it.
Try turning the volume up, Bill, because, oh, never mind.
Say it louder.
I can yell at him.
Who knows hand language than just sign language?
He's gotta look for the microphone and volume on it.
So now, we can hear you, but you can't hear us. Try turning up the volume on your speakers.
Okay.
Can you?
Yeah, Roger.
Well, that should be through the, well, some reason. Oh, I know.
And he's muted. Do you wanna unmute him?
Yeah, let's see.
Alright, Bill, can you hear us now?
Hear us, Bill?
We've got five people here. Can you come to town hall?
Do you wanna try maybe dialing in the number? What would be the number? Okay, the number for dialing in is 8. So 888-788-0099. And then the meeting ID is 810-7212-4202. And then, so just keep, keep speaking into the, into the computer, but you'll be able to get the audio. That's all. Okay, cool.
Can we hear Bill?
Hear us, Bill?
Probably. If we called in on the phone.
Well, now, they'll still be doing the talking through the. But I'm not seeing him coming in.
That top number there. 305, that's.
Yeah, that's not the number I called on. There's another one here.
So you can still hear us, right?
Yes, I can.
Yeah, thanks.
Hear us, Bill? Hear us? No, we can't hear you now that you can hear us.
I think he needs additional headphones.
Bill, can you hear us now?
I can hear you, yes.
Alright, yes. So we can hear you now as well.
Great.
Alright, so. Everybody's good. Mike, can you get rid of a lot of the photo boxes up there for me, please?
That's why we usually have the two computers.
Alright, so. The zoning board review is now in session. We have one, two, three, four petitions continued from last week that were here tonight. First thing I'll do is for all of those members that are here, Mr. Borden.
Present.
John Borden. Mr. Farrell.
Ben Farrell is present.
Ms. Horowitz.
Present.
Odika.
Present.
And Council, Mr. Gavin. They start there before.
I'm here.
I totally agree. Thank you, Gavin. Also, our required secretary Barber is here. Okay, just some reminders to board members, because this is a virtual meeting. When you are speaking, please identify yourself. Phone audience does need to know who is speaking. And any vote or motion, whoever is making that vote or motion, please identify yourselves as well. Those in attendance that are calling in that want to ask a question, it is star nine. Raise your hand, and I believe it is unmute yourself. It is star six. So, the first item on the agenda is a petition by Bullfrog Fit LLC applicant, Scott Duane Paselli, owner, seeking a special use permit to operate in the indoor recreation facility under Article 5, Section B13. It does not require any variances whatsoever, just special use criteria.
That's correct. Hello, everybody. This is Matt Chappelle here on behalf of Bullfrog Fit. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah, we can.
Okay. Thank you, everybody, first of all. I appreciate the special meeting. I know there was a lot last week. So I appreciate everyone taking time out of their night. Like I said, I'm here on behalf of Bullfrog Fit. He is here seeking a special use permit in order to operate an indoor recreation center, specifically a gym, in the town center. He is looking to operate in an existing unit at 2477 East Main Road. Or to make everybody a little bit more familiar, it's the Food Works Plaza is what I always kind of refer to it as. It's the opposite building, but kind of in the same plaza. As you guys know, this is in the town center. The town center that we have basically says thou shalt not do any use so long or without a special use permit. So here we are. Start off with special use permits. One of the first things that we look at is the required parking. We look at the both required parking for the ordinance, what's provided, and what this use would require. If you look at page, I believe it should be 18 and 19 of your packets, if everything's still numbered the same as last week. Page 18, you should see a schematic that shows the entire lot that encompasses both buildings parking. And page 19, you'll see a brief synopsis that I did to help everybody kind of help clarify what is required and what's there. So the parking part of our ordinance for recreation or health clubs requires one parking for every 200 square feet of gross leasable area. This particular unit that the petitioner is gonna be leasing is a total of 2,288 square feet. So dividing that by the 200 that would require one spot, we get a total of 11.4 required parking spaces. And just for reference and kind of history of this particular unit, this is where the dentist's office used to be. And a dentist's office actually requires essentially the same amount of parking at 11.1 spaces. So there's really, there's no increase in required parking here. And one more thing that I think is important is, first, this, this lot is probably one of the most successful plaza parking lots that the town has. This is the one parking lot that has, you know, that almost everybody in town has been to. And no, at least I've never, you know, had to park on the grass or not have a spot or even really walk too far to where I'm going in the, in the center. But this particular unit kind of has a separate parking lot of its own. If you look in the northeast corner of that schematic, and that kind of separate parking area has a total of 16 spaces. So even without all the shared parking for the other units, this unit has this separate lot that, you know, traditionally patrons visiting Unit 4 would use, and it has 16 spaces, which is obviously more than the required 11. So parking here should never be an issue, particularly for this use. And even if, even if it did require its own lot, the separate parking lot kind of towards the unit would suffice the ordinance. I have next to me here, I should have introduced at the beginning, I apologize. This is Jeremiah O'Connor. He is the owner of Bullfrog Fit and the petitioner. I submitted a letter from the owners of the property last week. I'm not sure if it made it into the packet or if it needs to be read in. Scott Paselli specifically giving the petition with his blessing. And they also signed off on the application, obviously.
I'll bring that into the record, Mr. Chappelle, but first off, do you want to, let me swear in your applicant?
Yeah, so I'm gonna have him testify to this special use criteria, so if we could have him sworn in.
Alright. Normally, we'd have you raise your right hand, ask you if you swear to tell the truth. Okay, could you give your full name and address so Barber can record it?
Do you want my residential address?
Yes.
Okay, it's Jeremiah O'Connor, and I am at 121 Prospect Hill Street in Newport Row Island, apartment number four.
Just, just to interrupt for a second, just, this publock has just joined the meeting. So Kathy, we've started this one. We'll have you listen in on the next one, okay?
Okay.
Alright, thanks. So I do have a letter that Mr. Chappelle is referring to. Members of the zoning board, I, Scott Paselli, and the owner of property located at 2477 East Main Road, where Bullfrog Fit LLC is proposing to operate a fitness performance center in one of the existing units. I am in full support of the petition and I'm excited to have Bullfrog Fit as a tenant. Please contact me if you have any questions or concerns. That's Scott Paselli. Goodnight, Mr. Chappelle.
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. O'Connor, you're the owner of Bullfrog Fit?
Yes.
And you've been operating since 2015? And until this time, you've been operating out of Peak Fitness, is that correct? And during that time, you and your clients basically work out amongst the other general members of Peak Fitness. And you're looking now to, you're seeking the special use permit to have your own space exclusively for your clientele? And you have a slightly smaller clientele? It's not, it's not a gym like Peak Fitness or Workout World or Planet Fitness where there may be hundreds of members who are basically free to go, come and go as they please. And you and I have addressed the criteria that our ordinance calls for in order for a special use permit to be granted.
Yes, we have.
And as I believe my father, Court Chappelle, has coined the phrase, is the A through J criteria. That we're gonna address for the board. Do you believe that this use would be detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood, surrounding area?
No.
And will this use be compatible with the neighboring uses?
Yes.
In fact, the unit directly adjacent to, to your unit is also a gym. Is that correct? This will not create any nuisance or hazard in the neighborhood?
No.
Is there adequate protection to the surrounding properties by use of open space and plantings? You're not, you're not adding anything to the exterior of this building?
No.
You're not expanding the footprint? Safe vehicular access and adequate parking, as we addressed earlier? And as proper control of noise, smoke, odor, and lighting will be provided? In fact, the, the wall in between your unit and the adjacent unit, I just so happen to have personal knowledge of, because my grandfather built it, is two separate 2x4 walls with soundproofing insulation in between the two walls, not just one wall separating the two units. Will solar rights of the neighbors be affected? Again, you're not adding anything to the exterior of this building that would affect that. And the proposed use in conformance with the comprehensive plan of the town enforcement? Specifically, the, there's a, there's a balanced growth goal that the comprehensive plan addresses of commercial and residential for the better of the community. The health, safety, and welfare of the community will be protected? And is consistent with the purpose of the town center district? Specifically, it will contribute to a community atmosphere that is consistent with a traditional New England town center? I have nothing else of Mr. O'Connor. If the board has any questions for him?
I've got a couple. It sounds more like it's more personal fitness training. Is that correct?
Everyone's a one-on-one, personal training, or two-on-one, very small group based. And it's just private, by appointment only sessions.
So there'll be some equipment in there, but to Mr. Chappell's point, it's not even like the small indoor gym next door. It's not that there's a lot of.
Right, and the foot traffic will be much less. Again, it's not like a Planet Fitness that probably has hundreds of members. And at any given time, 100 different people could choose to go to that particular gym. Here, it's very, it's very small. There's only four or five personal trainers doing either one-on-one training or two-on-one training. So I mean, at a maximum, there may be 10 to 12 people here, but at a time.
What are the hours of operation?
We're looking at 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
5:00 AM, 10:00 PM, and you're talking roughly 10 to 12 people?
Yeah, it's, it's pretty limited as far as the size is as it is. So we probably wouldn't, wouldn't be able to fit too much more than that without feeling too crowded.
Right, and everybody, correct me if I'm wrong, but in this particular business, you need an appointment. It's not like a Peak Fitness or whatever, where you can just become a member and just walk in the door and workout. You need to make an appointment ahead of time, so you have something to do.
Yeah, it's by appointment only, so that you can make an appointment. And the door will, the door will for most, most part be locked up front. So we'll have to make an appointment anyway to be able to access.
I have no other questions, Mr. Borden? Yes, Mr. Borden, zoning board member, I have a couple of questions. For petition references, in the downstairs portion, a sauna and massage. Are you going to have masseuse there and try to subcontract that out for massages?
No, so that will be similar to a room that they had at Peak Fitness, where there are tables there mostly for stretching out clients, either before or after a workout. Some clients also will ask the trainers for, you know, a quick massage on, after a hard leg day. You know, rub the legs down a little bit. It will not be subcontracted out to any, any private massage therapist or anything like that.
Right, and my next question is, the light plan shows two showers. So I'm guessing, obviously, in the DEM, ISDS system is capable of handling those showers. And if it's by appointment only, there won't be a lot of people showering, just be on an individual basis?
That's correct, and there are two bathrooms, so I mean, for practicality purposes, two showers were put in. Generally, you know, the clientele won't work out in the shower there, will typically go home to shower. So those are going to be very limited. Again, it was a dentist's office here originally, which, as I'm sure you guys know, is, is pretty restrictive as far as septic is concerned, so it'll be far, far less than the dentist's use.
Thank you. Mr. Furrell, do you have any questions?
No, sir. This has been Furrell, no questions.
Okay, Ms. Horowitz?
This is Sue Horowitz, no questions.
Ludica, do you have any questions?
No, Ludica, no, I don't.
It's good to hear from you, Mr. Ludica. Okay, I don't know if we have any letters in the file on this at all. None on the file, I was going to want from Pesseli's. Mike, do we have anyone? Okay, so we have no bonds or interested parties and no letters on the file. So Bullfrog Fit LLC is before the board, protect assesses map 36, lot 15, Article 5, Section B13, proposing to operate a fitness and performance, and performance center in existing commercial building. They're requesting a special use criteria, which is again, Article 5, Section B13, and the A through J criteria. Mr. Borden, I'm Borden, zoning board member, voting for the Bullfrog Petition.
Chairman, the petitioner is seeking to operate a fitness center, which is a commercial use. This is in the town center, a commercial district. Special use criterion is all the relief that he needs. He does not require any dimensional variances. The traffic is not going to be an issue. The number of cars that are going to be generated and are going to come in and out of East Main Road is not going to exceed the prior use of the dentist's office, and it's going to be minimal. Parking has been addressed. There's adequate parking, noise, smoke, odors. This fitness center is not going to cause any objectionable features. It is compatible with all the surrounding properties, i.e. food works, clements down the road. This is a commercial use that, in my opinion, meets all the special use criteria. It's compatible with the comprehensive plan, and I vote to approve. Thank you. Mr. Furrell?
This is Ben Furrell, Mr. Chairman. I also vote to approve this special permit for the reasons cited by Mr. Borden.
Thank you. Ms. Horowitz?
This is Sue Horowitz. I vote to approve for reasons previously stated for the special use permit.
Very much. Mr. Ludica?
No, Ludica, I vote to approve for the reasons previously stated.
Thank you. The chairman also votes to approve for reasons previously stated by Mr. Borden. I too believe that it meets all the special use criteria. In fact, there is a similar, but a similar business right next door. But this one would be less intrusive and more controlled, so yes, I vote to approve that. So you're all set, Mr. Chappell?
Thank you very much, everybody. All right, I believe I also have the next petition, so I have to run out and grab, grab, grab the next client.
While we're waiting for Mr. Chappell to get his client, just for the board members, the very last petition, the Revival and Design Bill. Mr. Borden is going to have to recuse himself on that one, so we'll need everybody else. But you know.
Everybody ready?
Okay, next item on the agenda is petition by Andre Gonzalez owner, seeking a dimensional variance to be allowed to construct a single-family dwelling on a lot, not funding on a public road by, and a special use permit as long as an undersized, non-conforming lot of record located at Zero Metacomet Street. Goodnight, Mr. Chappell.
Hello again, everybody. Matt Chappell here on behalf of petitioner and landowner, Andre Gonzalez. Also Jessica there in the back. As Mr. Chairman said, he's the owner of map 5, lot 10, down on Metacomet Street. It's kind of an interesting street, if you're familiar with it. It, it connects on two sides of a loop, and it is paved on either side, but not, not paved completely through. So there's a space in the middle that isn't paved, which is why we're here today seeking a variance to construct on a lot that does not have a frontage on a public street. Also, the lot is 7,500 square feet in an R10 zone. So we also have those additional special use permit criteria for a substandard lot of record. I also have Mike Hill, who is the contractor hired to build the home. I, I believe he called in. I'm not sure if he needs to be brought in now or later, but I will ask him to be sworn in and testify to a few things. Also, down the line, Mr. Gonzalez will be testifying. Before.
Want to swear Mr. Gonzalez in first?
Sure.
Okay, Mr. Gonzalez, virtually raise your right hand and swear to tell the truth. Could you please give your full name and address to Bob Ross, Secretary?
My name is Andre Louis Gonzalez at 47 King Philip Street, Port Smith, Rhode Island.
Okay, Mr. Chappell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before we go, begin with Mr. Gonzalez's testimony, I think it's important to address a few things about the lot and kind of how we got here. I already addressed how, how the street kind of is, is interesting in that it's not paved all the way through, but paved on either side. Also, if you'll turn to page 11 of your packets, you'll see that Mr. Hill, who is the contractor, actually applied for a permit back in February and was issued a building permit to begin building the home. He went there, was there about a week or so? Dug the hole for the foundation, put the footings in, and then I believe one of the abudders said, hey, wait, you, you need a variance. And that's when Mr. Gonzalez came right into my office, and we addressed the need for a variance. Also, if you flip to page 12 of the packet, you'll see a zoning petition, or a decision rather, from this board for the lot immediately to the north of Mr. Gonzalez's lot. That's a map 5, lot 10A, where this board granted the same variance that we're going, that we're looking to be granted with no frontage on a public street, as well as a 6.8% lot coverage variance. Now, this particular petition, you'll notice, seeks no other relief other than a lot without frontage on a public road. If the town had adopted this road and paved it and put it into town specs, then Mr. Gonzalez wouldn't even need to be in front of you today. He was able to design a house that did not require any setback relief or any lot coverage relief, which on a small lot down in Common Fence, as you know, is, is something that a lot of people come in front of you and ask for.
No lot coverage variance requested, no setback requested, just build a house on a lot that's not on a public way?
Correct. All right, Mr. Gonzalez, you are the owner of the lot on Metacomet Avenue, map 5, lot 10? You're proposing to build just a single-family home? And as we just addressed in a diet, in designing the home, your, your goal was to put a house there that would require no relief, you thought? But you, you designed it inside the setbacks and in a way that would not require any lot coverage variance? Okay, and if, if, if the, so the variance, if it were not granted, is it fair to say that it would be a substantial hardship for you?
It would be an extreme hardship.
In fact, this, if you couldn't build a house on this lot, the lot would essentially be useless?
Yes, it's correct.
And this particular hardship is unique to, to your lot? Not something shared by the entire neighborhood? And you didn't cause this hardship? You didn't come in and rip out a paved road so that there was no frontage?
No.
And should the board grant this relief? It wouldn't alter the general character of the neighborhood?
No.
Still be a residential house in a residential neighborhood? Okay. Do you believe that the relief that you're seeking is the least relief necessary? In fact, it's, it's less than what was granted on the abutting lot? And is it fair to say that if this variance were not granted, it would amount to more than a mere inconvenience? Okay, and now, since, as we discussed, this is a substandard lot of record, and as you heard me say earlier, there are a few additional criteria that we call special use criteria when you're seeking a variance on a substandard lot of record? So the first of which being that the proposed building will allow adequate space for fire protection in the neighborhood. In fact, you actually met the fire marshal down there today, correct? And he addressed what you're going to do with the road. He was fine with it?
Yep, he was okay with it.
And he actually signed off originally in February when the permit was, was issued? Will this building provide adequate light and air between the other buildings? Would it alter the character of the neighborhood or adversely affecting the neighboring properties?
No.
Would it create lot coverage and setbacks, lessen the average of the adjacent properties? Which again, just requires no lot coverage or setback relief? And would it propose any substantial detriment to the public or to the neighbors?
No.
Nothing further from Mr. Gonzalez. If you guys have any questions for him?
Borden, yes, John Borden, zoning board member, I have a few questions. First of all, I applaud the petitioner for coming in at 15.1% lot coverage, where 20% is required, given that his lot is only 7,500 square feet. However, I've been on this board, actually for quite a number of years, and I've seen people come back for more. Your particular petition has no sheds. Is there a basement or is this going to be built on slab?
There is going to be a basement.
There is a basement. It's a modular home. The, the foundation for the basement is actually already dug. I'm sorry?
Okay, so.
There is a basement, yes.
Are there any plans to have like a 10 by 12, 10 by 12 shed for mowers and lawn equipment? I mean, you could, you could possibly do it by rent and still meet the 20%, just here.
Right, there may be in the future, and honestly, it would be. Right, and, and if, if down the line, there was a shed proposed, it would either be built to the size that would not require a variance, or obviously, if a bigger shed were required, then we would have to come back here, which, but at that time, we're not, at this time, we're not planning on anything like that.
Okay, and then my same question applies to the deck. The deck on your lot coverage application is listed at 36 square feet. Is that a six-by-six deck? Is that all you're planning for a deck?
Are you referring to the, the front or back?
Actually, I see 27. I see, actually, I see 27.45.
There's a porch off the side as well as. Right, so if you, if you look at page 17, which is, oh. They are, and again, he, it's a modular home, so I think that he kind of picked a house plan and went with it. And, you know, he, he really was trying to design a house for this lot that would require no relief. But as, as we spoke to before down the line, he ended up coming here. But, but the proposed porches are what will be built and what are proposed.
Okay, my last question is also on the lot coverage sheet. Just below the garage portion, there's 104 square feet, but obviously, there's not a garage proposed. What is that 104 square feet?
Actually, I believe that that is, and that's my mistake, I apologize. That is the size of the, what is labeled as the porch on that plan. So there's a deck and then kind of a bulkhead that are listed. On the side, and the 104 is that porch that runs along the north side of the house.
Okay, that makes more sense. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Schpel, do we have any questions? You're out.
This has been Farrell, sir. I have no questions.
Thank you. Mr. Vlakas, do you have any questions?
I know I do not.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Horowitz, do you have any questions?
No, I do not. Sorry, it's too old.
Thank you. The chairman has no other questions either. Is there anything else you'd like to add, Mr. Schpel?
Well, I do have Mr. Mike Hill, who's the contractor on the project, who called in. I saw a letter that had just been flashed, which I'm sure the board has read, but there are a few concerns with the current elevation of the road and lot. I was just calling on him to address that, just to address the temporary nature of those issues. I don't know if he can be brought in as a participant.
Yeah, Mike, you can bring him in now.
I, to make it simpler, I can just address those. Okay.
Okay, that's fine. Let me read the letters, Mr. Schpel. Can you hear me now?
If that's what the board would like to do, I think there's quite a few of them.
Well, I have a number of letters that I do have to read, so that's why I'm asking you if there's anything else you want to add to this or?
You can go ahead and read the letters, and then I will, I'll just ask Mr. Hill a few questions that address what I think you'll see are concerns of a few abuddits.
All right, we have a number of letters here that I will, in our packet and also this email that came in. So let me start with an email from an author, Smith, came in on Sunday, May 17. If you could forward this to the zoning board, I would appreciate it. Thank you for your help, Arthur Smith. To the fourth of the zoning board, subject, raising the level of Metacoma Street. My concern is that Mr. Gonzalez has raised the level of Metacoma Street, now blocks access to my lot. In addition to blocking access, this would raise danger issues. That said, I discussed this with Mr. Gonzalez and Mr. Hill's contractor. Outcome of the discussion is that the street level was raised to facilitate the positioning of the crane. I understand is that the street will be restored to grade level when the house is complete. I have no objection to this, to this temporary, and I wish Mrs. Gonzalez well. Thank you, Arthur Smith. Now, there's a letter dated March 19, 2020, addressed to zoning board review, dear Mr. Knott. My wife Haley Krantz and I live and own the property at 65 Metacoma Street. Now, writing to you on behalf of Andre Gonzalez. Mr. Gonzalez is applying for variance to construct a house which will be located next door to our house. We support Mr. Gonzalez's attempt to build a house. We believe it will add to the property value of the neighborhood. We have no objections at this time. We know Mr. Gonzalez to be a thoughtful and responsible neighbor and look forward to watching his house be constructed. We are aware the house will be constructed on an unpaved road, as is ours. We believe the town of Portsmouth should take ownership of the road and pavement. We've been in our home for nearly 15 years and have witnessed many town vehicles use this road. The only reason for not taking ownership of the road is because of the cost of paving it. Bombing the road during snowstorms has been a constant problem because town plows stop at the end of the pavement, often leaving a wall of snow for us when we exit our property. Contact me with any questions. Sincerely, Mike, Michael Krantz and Haley Krantz. As I go through, the next letter is Scott Bergo, 46 King Philip Street. Best to town Portsmouth, we believe the owners of property on Metacoma Street close to Mr. Andre. We be the owners of property on Metacoma Street, close to Mr. Andre Gonzalez's lot. We have no objections of Mr. Gonzalez rightfully building a house on his lot. Signed, Scott C. Bergo and Joyce L. Bergo. We have a letter dated April 9 regarding Andre Gonzalez, to whom I may concern. We are in support of Mr. Gonzalez building his new house on Metacoma Street, Portsmouth, Rhode Island. We own multiple houses and house lots in close proximity to his proposed new house lot. We do not oppose the building of this new house and believe it will add increased property value to our existing homes. Sincerely, Russell F. and Teresa S. Garbs. Town of Portsmouth, R.I., Mike Gushua, dated 5/13. My name is Connie Walsh of 65 King Philip Street, Portsmouth. I also own lot 5 to 10A at zero Metacoma Street. Writing in consideration of construction happening on the abutting lot on Metacoma, I do not have any issue with the house going in. I do have some concerns about what is happening with the street. It is currently being built up to the point I will not have access to my land. I'd like to see the road brought back down to grade level so it remains in line with current road. Please let me know if there's anything I can do to ensure this happens. Signed, Connie Walsh. Anything else? There are no other letters in the file. Mike, are there any calls or anything?
You can ask if they, if there are any.
Are there any attendees that want to speak? They could raise their hand.
If we have one.
We have one? Okay. We just have to take a brief one-minute pause. Mr. Gordon needs to step out of our sight.
If we could ask the name of the person who's put their hand up. M I L is what they come down to.
Take it a wild step, that's Mil Kinsella.
I'm mute. Sorry, unmute. Yes, it is.
Ah, Mil, how are you?
I'm wonderful. How about yourself?
I'm doing okay, considering the circumstances. Just be patient one second until Mr. Gordon steps back, okay?
Sure enough.
Mil, could you give us your full name and address for the record?
Sure, it's Mil Kinsella at 74 Narragansett Boulevard.
Are you still Kinsella?
Correct.
I see L.L.A. Okay, Mr. Gordon has returned. Ms. Kinsella, please go ahead.
I just had a couple of questions, quick question. With a 7,500 square foot lot, I think there's plenty of room for the house, first of all, that he's talking about, which is my square footage of my lot, so there's plenty of room for a house. My concern is just on one document in the file, it says it's a four-bedroom house. The other document says a three-bedroom house. Which is it?
It's a three-bedroom house with a four-bedroom septic tank in case, in case they want to upgrade in the future and add another room, but there's not going to be a fourth room.
Okay, that explains that. Okay, and then there's no height on it also. It was kind of left blank on the petition, so I'm just curious how tall.
No, it can't exceed 35 feet.
Okay, and of course, the building is within, going to be under the required 35 feet, or else we would need a variance for that as well, but we're not requesting that.
Okay, and my only concern, I think it's wonderful, I'll be closer neighbors, that's fine. But my problem with anything built in Common Fence Point, including on Metacoma, is last time a house was built, my lot flooded. So is there any reparation for that if the displacement of water causes flooding on my lot?
There is a soil erosion and a certain control plan that was done and submitted with the plan. Obviously, if there is ever some issue in the future, then that would be addressed, but as of now, the John Braga designed the plan to not affect the neighboring parcels.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else, Mike? Hey, if I want to mute, no, yeah.
Okay. Chairman, I have a question. I'm not sure if I missed it, but has anyone raised a question about Metacoma being, the grade being raised during construction? And whether or not that's going to go away afterwards? The grade was raised as support of the crane, but one of the abuddits and the letter mentioned she can't access her lot, actually two of them.
Mr. Gordon, that's why I have Mr. Hill here, who's the contractor, to address, you know, the construction plan and what will be.
Okay.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, do you want me to swear in?
Yes, please. Swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Then full name and address to the bottom, please.
Michael Hill, 294 Valley Road, Middletown, Rhode Island.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Go ahead.
Yeah, we brought the grade up only because we need to have a level area with the 100-foot crane in there and the big modular boxes in there. Once those are out of there and the house is completely on its foundation, then the level of the property will be brought down to the existing grade, the lot was previous to us starting construction.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Schpel, I have a question for you. The road, who actually owns Metacoma Street?
It's a paper road that was drawn into the plans, just the town had never adopted it and had it paved to town specs, which is a requirement for subdivisions now, but this was prior to that requirement.
So does the town own the road?
It's a technical, but technically.
Right, it brings up the question of if we didn't put a condition on it to bring it back to grade. Who legally, who legally could go after the owner-builder, you know? Go ahead, Kevin, how would that work?
Kevin, you just muted yourself.
Okay, okay, ask that again, Jim, please. How would it work?
Yeah, we can hear you, Kevin.
Can you, am I on?
Yeah, you're on.
Okay, what was the question again?
All right, so Metacoma Street, you know, some of the abuddits have brought up the fact that the contractor has raised the grade of Metacoma Street for the purpose of putting a crane there so they could put the modules on to build the module hall. And of course, their intention is to take it back down to the original grade. But I guess the question is, yes, we can put a condition on it that says they have to do that. But if we didn't, who owns the road? In other words, who could go back after the owner of the house and the thing that raised the grade up? It's not owned by the town, it's a paper road. Who legally owns that? I could say, hey, look, you need to put our road back the way it was.
I mean, this was a, this was a plat recorded, I understand, long before there was zoning and planning board and everything. So the town never accepted, to the extent there was an incipient dedication of the road to the town. The town never accepted it. The town has no responsibility over it. But, so, I mean, it's a private, really a private issue among, the people on that plat have rights of access and rights to use the road and so forth, which I haven't looked at or researched. But, I mean, if you want to put a condition, like you said, if you want to put a condition that the grade be brought back to preconstruction, the board can do that, but it's hard to speculate on issue, I mean, the ownership is.
Anybody who watches the street, right?
Whatever it is, I mean, it's whatever, you know, you need to do the research and look at it, but presumably, all the plat, the people in the plat have the right to access this private road to, for access to their lot. And, you know, I typically, when things like this come up, would typically say that it's, there's disputes over things of this nature. It's something than something for private landowners to deal with. But, you know, I mean, so we have, I mean, the board often does these kind of, does these variances for Prudence Island and other roads throughout the town. I mean, like, for example, Black Point Lane, and there's all kinds of private roads in this town, you know?
I can't remember anybody wanting to temporarily raise the grade for the crane on.
Yeah, well, I mean, you want to put a condition, I mean, put a condition on it that the grade be restored to the prior, you know, preconstruction conditions.
Okay, thanks, Kevin.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the purpose of that, again, was for the, this big crane has to come and drop this house in. And remember, he had a building permit. It was supposed to be like that for a day or two. It wasn't intended to be like that, you know, for, I think we're on month three or four now, after everything that happened. So it was intended to be very temporary, not affect anybody, and be put right back to the original grade. And also, and the fire marshal actually drove down there today, and I've had discussions with him because, obviously, access for the, for any emergency vehicle is an issue or something that we need to address. He did give me permission to represent that in going down there today, so long as the road is constructed the same way that is on the abutting property, the same, you know, original grade that it was, which the abutting property now is just kind of a compact gravel road, then he would have no objections. But if the board wants to put a condition on the CO that the road be returned to the grade, and certainly no objections here.
Anything else to add, Mr. Schpel?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman, just thank you.
Okay.
Jim? I mean, you could also, maybe it would also be at a condition that a letter from the, from the fire department approving what was just talked about as far as the access.
I spoke to him on the phone today while he was on the property, actually. And, you know, I told him if he wants to be a part of the construction and give it, you know, his blessing as well, then that's fine.
Well, that's what Kevin suggested, that possibly we get a letter at the end too.
I will say, I requested this in March, so I'm a little weary to request a letter for a CO, but. to request a letter for a CO, but.
But.
Or just a condition that it's the same as.
Mr. Chappelle, to that point, you're an attorney. What you're basically telling me is hearsay, because I have nothing from the fire department, I haven't even spoken to them. So if you get where I'm going with that, we're not saying we need it tonight, we're just saying by the end, we would like to have some.
I do, and, and again, he, he said as long as it, it is similar or the same as, as the abutting property, then, then he's happy, so, which, which is what Mr. Gonzalez is planning on doing, so.
Right. But again, you understand that, as far as the board's concerned, that's hearsay, because we didn't hear it, we don't have any documentation from them.
I understand that.
Okay, all right.
Just know that I requested that in March.
If I can add one item here, in February 12th, we got a building permit from the fire marshal, Mark Renetti's. That's on file with the town. Again, that was on February 12th, signed off.
All right, anything else? Okay, that being said, Andre Gonzalez is before the board protects us as map five lot 10. First thing I'm going to do is run through the special use criteria. Mr. Chappelle, with your applicant, I'm not quite sure you did that, but I will. Would this allow adequate space for fire protection?
Yep.
Would it provide adequate light and air between the buildings?
Yes.
Okay. Would it alter the character of the neighborhood or adversely affect any neighboring properties?
No.
Would it create lot coverage setbacks less than the average of lot coverage and setbacks of the adjacent property?
No, no, in fact, there's no, there's no relief.
Right. Would it impose a substantial detriment to the public or to immediate?
No.
Thank you. That being said, um, we'll go right to Mr. Borden. Mr. Borden, just, just before we vote, I'd like to propose some conditions. John Borden, Zoe Ward member, I would like to propose condition number one, that the petitioner restore the grade of the road back to its previous condition prior to construction, and it would be subject to getting a CO that the road would have to be inspected such that it will return to its original grade. Okay? And second, I would like to require, and I sympathize with the petitioner that, I guess they started this February 12th and did request a letter from the fire marshal, but I would ask that they get a letter from the fire marshal stating that he's comfortable with the ingress and egress of emergency vehicles to access this section of private road. And can I have a second on those conditions?
Aye, Kathy speaking.
Thank you, Kathy. Okay, individually. So we have a motion made in second for two conditions. Mr. Borden, in favor of or opposed to those conditions? Mr. Borden approves both conditions. Mr. Furell?
Mr. Chairman, Ben Farrell votes to approve both, both conditions.
Mr. Bobakis?
I vote to approve both conditions.
I vote to approve both conditions.
And the chairman also votes to approve both conditions, so, thank you. All right, so now we'll vote.
Mr. Chairman, if I can clarify the first condition. I believe Mr. Borden said that prior to construction, the road has to be put back to initial grade.
Prior to the CO.
Okay, that's fine.
The occupancy, right.
That's fine.
Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, that being said, again, Andre Gonzalez, before the board protects us as map five lot 10, seeking a special use permit for a lot, substandard lot of record, and also requesting to build a house on a lot that does not front a public ledge. Mr. Borden?
Mr. Chairman, in regards to the special use permit, the petitioner walked through all the criteria and the ordinance for substandard lot of record, and in my opinion, he's met the criteria and the ordinance. It's, it's not going to be, to create a problem with the neighborhood. In regards to the dimensional variance, this is a, this is a private road, and deny the petitioner the right to build a home on his land because it's a private road would certainly amount to a hardship more than a mere inconvenience. The petitioner is seeking the least relief necessary in that he's not requesting any setback variances, nor is he requesting any lot coverage relief. So petitioner has met the criteria, and I vote to approve. Thank you. Mr. Furell?
This is Ben Farrell, Mr. Chairman. I vote to approve the special use permit and the dimensional variance for the reasons cited by Mr. Borden.
Thank you. Ms. Bobakis?
I concur with Mr. Borden and Mr. Farrell, and I vote to approve both applications.
Thank you. Ms. Horowitz?
I vote to approve for reasons previously stated for both applications.
Thank you. Part of the, Chairman votes to approve the special use criteria. I believe the special use permit meets that criteria. Actually chaired the board back in 2008 when we heard the petition of Stephen Donald Leclerc on Metacoma Street as well. And at that time, you know, same criteria is here. You know, this is an existing legal lot of record, okay? It's nothing the applicant did, he didn't subdivide this years ago or anything like that that created this. So I agree with Mr. Borden, I think to deny amounts to more than a mere inconvenience, and I actually applaud the petitioner for trying to make it come in without having to have any dimensional variances whatsoever. So my vote is to approve as well. So, Mr. Gonzalez, Mr. Chappelle, it's been approved.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Chappelle?
Yes?
I, I want to know, is court gonna give you his salary for this petition? You should get paid at the same rate he does.
Yeah, we're, we're still in negotiations on that.
I need to talk to him.
Meet him up a little for me on the next one, though, so I can make it look like, you know, I got approved and he, he need a little bit more.
Okay, so, thanks. All right, so next item on the agenda is a petition by Timothy and Christine Downs owners seeking a dimensional variance for side rear yard setbacks and lot coverage and a special use permit to construct in addition to the garage an in-ground swimming pool on a non-conforming lot of record located 39 Bayview Avenue. Are the Downs on?
I know I've been talking to them, so they should be on standby.
Let's see. Anyone unmuted?
Yeah.
There they are. So I assume that's both Timothy and Christine Downs, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes.
Do you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, so individually, raise your right hand, swear and tell the truth.
We do.
We do.
Okay, could you please give individually your full name and address to Barbara for the record?
Timothy Downs, 39 Bayview Ave, Portsmouth, Rhode Island.
Christine Downs, 39 Bayview Ave, Portsmouth, Rhode Island.
Okay, so that was what you'd like to do.
Mr. Chairman, Chris Chappelle for the petitioner.
Oh, Mr. Chappelle, I didn't know you had this one.
I was listening to you talking about.
Hey, your son wants to beat us up here.
Yeah, I heard that.
No, we don't appreciate that.
Worse than that, worse than that, they asked me to give him a raise.
Yes, exactly, he did a great job. And he insisted on that.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Chappelle, I assume you are presenting for the Downs then?
I am, so let me start. This petition should look familiar to some of you, at least those that were on the board in 2015, because on December 10th of 2015, the identical petition with some minor changes to the better from board standards was presented. It was presented by a gentleman by the name of Sean McCarthy, who owned title to the property then. It was then purchased by the Downs with this permission during the time when the tolling of, of all reports would have allowed them to do this up and through July 1st, I believe, of 2018. So they just weren't ready to go, weren't ready to pull the trigger. Now here we are in 2020, and the paperwork is identical with the exception of some small corrections that I've made. First, I want you to notice that of the original petition asked for a second story on the main house and the garage and a mudroom and a, and a roofed structure to go over the existing patio that shows on the plan that's in front of you. So that patio is already there, that, that cement form is already there. It was already counted in lot coverage, it already existed. The addition in this particular petition is that we put a roof over that, which was identical to the first petition, and that we connect that small four-foot by five or six-foot breezeway, so the garage would be connected. Rather than put a second floor on both the house and the garage, because Mr. McCarthy had more visions of, of more bedrooms and more space than the Downs have, they are only seeking to put the garage over the second floor and the same stairway and same sunroom. The pool is also identical, except it's been actually, in the theory of least relief necessary, slid a little closer to the house, and when they started pricing out the pools and looking for the size they wanted, the pool in this petition is smaller than the one that was drawn on the original petition. And if you look at our application, I think you'll see the pool is 12 by 22 instead of what's written on the screen in front of you. So it, so it is smaller and less. Now, the original petition had a front yard variance request, and they needed that because they were going up a second story. They weren't getting any closer to the front yard, but they were going up a second story. Since the house is not going up a second story, there is no front yard request. Because the garage is going straight up to a second story, still only being, I'll have Mr. Downs, who's a contractor, testify about the height, but not only below the 35 feet, but I think it's only 24 feet or something. When it's done, 21 feet, it's well below the thing.
Right.
But it still has the existing sideline grandfathered right to be that distance from the property line, which I think is seven feet. And it requires in that R20 zone to be 15 feet. So even though it's going straight up and not getting any closer to the lot line, it still requires the sideline variance. The back of the house, the same thing, it was already that close to the lot line. It's not getting any closer than the petition. It again, would this be, and that's only a small distance, it's 2.6 feet, which I'm going to address, but that would still require the 27.6-foot rear yard setback, because 30 feet is required, where there is only 2.4 feet now, I believe, to the closest corner. Everything else requires no variances and is no different than the other petition. So the other.
Let me just stop you real quick before you get too far. So the one difference I see in our original decision, Mr. Borden and I then sit on that, there was a 9% in lot covered variance, and now there's an 11%. So where's the additional?
That's a great, that's a great question, and I take, I take you to the decision that we did on Glenn Road of the basketball court and sports complex. And since 2018 or 19, we have been counting the aprons of pools and not just the pools, and we have been counting the patios, which we didn't always count. So if you look at the difference in the math, you'll see that four by 54, four-foot by 54, which is the apron around the pool. It was in the original petition, but it's changed the math by that degree, and it's only.
That's the apron around the pool.
Yes.
Very good, Mr. Chappelle.
Very good. Hey, I knew that was coming. Yeah, Chris smiled, I'm getting her faith back, she was a little worried about my son's coming, which is coming back to us. So that's where that math comes from, and that's what I was going to explain. So the difference is the original petitioner wanted another bedroom and was doing septic work and was, had more living space. The Downs have moved in there. The two of them, this is their home, they are living there. The pool is obviously a place where they, they'd like to enjoy the yard and have that, which I think is reasonable. The garage, I'll have him testify, but basically to expand the house is to get more living area, more living area, and he's looking to put a, a rec room or a man's cave or whatever is up there with the building stable and, and that. And also, as most of us, most people that have pools, what you don't want is everybody necessarily going through your entire house to use the bathroom when they're there, all your friends, kids, and significant others. So they did want to put a bathroom in that garage extension upstairs, so they not only have a bathroom for the billiards room or for the rec room, but also that people wouldn't have to tramp through the house if, if they use the pool, which because of the layout of the houses, is not a practical solution to have everybody going all the way through the, the new room, the living room, the kitchen, and then, and into the bathroom to use that while, while enjoying the pool. So with that, I'd be happy to ask them all these questions, but the testimony is really the same from it was last time. Because it's a, remember, it is also a pre-existing non-conforming lot, so we do have the same criteria for the special use permit. And obviously, because we're not getting any closer to any of the boundaries, it's going to be their testimony that the proposal will allow adequate space for fire protection, adequate light and air between buildings, because again, other than just the garage going up in height, there's no change to the existing structure. It won't alter the character of the neighborhood. In fact, the neighborhood tends to be larger houses than theirs, so this actually, I think, will make it more conforming. It won't create lot coverage setbacks different than the average adjacent because all of these setbacks previously exist. They're not getting any closer to any of these boundaries. The work is being done inside, and it won't.
Can I ask a question on that?
Sure.
Okay, and it may be just looking at the screen, and it's not very clear, but if you look at the two-foot four, I think it's two-foot four setback at the lower left corner of the garage footprint?
Yes.
Maybe two-foot six, that's not take, it looks to me like it's actually much less. If they took it at the, at the far.
We, we talked about that, because of that four-foot extension and the way the building is skewed, it would mathematically come closer.
Yeah, I mean, it should be paralleled.
Right. But we're gonna cut that, we can cut that back, so it increases no, no more. I can see where that, that end that's drawn is going to be six inches less. We did discuss that.
Okay.
It's just the angle that carries that more, so I don't. The other thing that I would like everybody to do is, I had asked Mike to upload a picture. Can you upload the, the two pictures of the backyard one at a time, so I can just show the board? Because it's very deceptive, because we abut the railroad, and the railroad, as you know, has a 50-foot right of way.
Yeah, you know, I remember that.
Yeah, and I, and I showed you pictures.
We did deal with that, I remember that. Yeah, I wasn't concerned, because it was railroad, 30 feet.
But there is actually the picture of the garage, and I had the Downs stakeout with that white string where the pool is. So all that's really happening is they're taking up their own yard. And if you look at that second picture, that's that same garage. You see that it's fenced, it's nowhere near two feet. The fence is there, actually much further than that. Then there's the railroad, then there's the back of Ferry Landing, which is. Then there's the railroad. Then there's the back of Ferry Landing, which is kind of an uphill pretty good bank up until the old, what used to be the golf course, and is now, of course, the condos. So there's no affected, I don't want to say the railroad is an affected neighbor, of course, but there's no affected person that's going to have this pool 2.7 feet from their bedroom window. And the reality with that fence is that they have a good 15 or 20 feet back there. So I know those pictures, I believe those pictures were shown to you last time, because I think I remember actually being being at this petition, although I did not present it. But it is different from an average 2.7 or 2.4-foot setback to a to a house that's only five feet off the boundary.
What's abutting in the railroad that's really not in use?
Right. And it's a six-foot fence that's 50 feet away and has been there since, certainly since the other petition, according to Google, a long time, so. Would you like me to inquire anything about the Downs regarding their request? I don't mean to cut these meetings shorter or do them any differently, but I think when you've seen it before, the testimony is all going to be consistent with what I've said.
Well, you know, having, personally having heard the and on the earlier petition, and then on that decision, and then, you know, just the fact that soon you said railroad, that like immediately rang a bell and that all brought back, so I personally don't have any any concerns at all. You didn't, what you probably do want to do is run through the special use criteria with the applicants, of course.
Either one of you, you've both been sworn in, but criteria when you're building on a substandard lot. And the first question is that would the proposed additions allow adequate space for fire protection and adequate light and air between buildings?
Yes.
So whoever comes around to get to the backyard now is using that same west side that they would use now, and also around your garage, correct?
Correct.
And there's no immediate neighbors where that garage going up higher is going to affect anybody's light. Is that right?
No, you're correct.
This addition will not alter the character of the neighborhood or adversely affect the neighboring properties. Is that right?
That's correct.
In fact, that street has become quite well-developed with some very high-end and and larger houses, and this probably brings you more in line with that neighborhood than less.
Yeah.
This won't create lot covered setbacks less than or any greater than they are now. Is that right? You're not going any closer to the sideline or any closer to the rear? And you understand the comment-
You are going closer to the rear.
Yes.
Yeah, you understand that we have drawn, originally this was drawn four feet wide and the length of the garage. So I don't know if it was caught. Doesn't appear to be caught the last time, but because that garage is skewed, whatever that angle it is, that would carry that closer to the lot line. Do you understand that?
I do understand that.
So we're going to, if you cut a foot of that off and leave it a foot short of the golden, for instance, or it wouldn't be closer on the bottom anyway. Is that right?
We can maintain that two-foot-six by pushing that piece back toward the house, yes.
Because that piece is not the full second floor. That piece represents the stairway.
Correct.
To get to it, is that right? So the second floor will go straight up on the existing structure, and the covered stairway, if you will, can step back that-
That's correct.
So that we don't have to be any closer than existing, correct?
Yes.
And that would be a condition, if you would, that would be put on the petition if the board seeks to approve it, and you understand and accept that. Is that right?
That's correct.
Yep.
And you don't believe that this will oppose any substantial detriment to the public or immediate neighbors? This is basically the same house as it is now, going up a story on the garage and putting a pool requires a fence and will be safe for the neighbors. Is that right?
That's correct.
Is that, I believe that adequately addresses those concerns, Mr. Chairman.
Most certainly did. All right, thank you, Mr. Spell. I'll just ask, see if any board members have any questions. Mr. Board, do you have any questions?
Mr. Chairman John Borden, I do have a question regarding the site plan. If you look at the site plan, it mentions existing cesspool to be filled and abandoned. Do you have a cesspool on this property, or has it been upgraded?
It has not been upgraded yet. We have a septic plan in place.
Okay, so then my next question would be, and it appears from the site plan that it meets the criterion, but I just learned the other day that there's a state regulation that the swimming, in-ground swimming pools have to be 25 feet away from the nearest ISDS leaching field or system. Are you 25 feet away?
And then you see the advantage system drawn on the left-hand side of the building in the upper left?
Yes, I see it.
Yes. 25 feet.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to get that on the record. No, okay. Thank you.
Well, I've got something. So I brought up the setback at the rear, but it's, I mean, it's more a matter of principle. If you want, if the board approves and to say that can be reduced to two-foot-six, so you don't have to step it back, I think that would be acceptable to me. I just don't want you to build it that way, and then someone comes out and says it's less than two-foot-six. So, but that's up to the board's other opinion. Do you guys understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, we do.
So, you know, I think rather than having them spend the extra expense of stepping it, if the board is willing to support that, to say that reduce that two-foot-six to two feet or one-foot-eight, you know, something like that. I don't know. But that's up to the board.
This is Ben Farrell. I believe Sue has a good idea, and we should allow the, we should remove that as a condition and allow the design to go as planned.
Well, we don't have to do it as a condition. We could, Mr. Spell's aware of this, he could amend the petition where the variance request for that rear now becomes, say, 28 feet instead of 27.6 feet, or 28 six inches.
What I'm really trying to do is the geometry in my head and and trying to estimate a number that is not too high, but is not too low.
Why don't we say it cannot extend beyond the face of the existing garage? Then you're fine.
Okay.
I mean, if, again, if the board agrees, then because I, those are really tricky ways, tricky situations when you try and do that measurement. You've actually got to do an angled dimension line, not a straight one like they've done. That's why we're coming up with this problem.
I get you. Right.
So I would say that it just has to align with the existing garage.
All right, so that means the rear yard variance request would be that it be in line with the existing block?
Yeah, that the addition cannot extend beyond the, I don't know if it's the north or the the south face of the existing garage.
Oh, I guess you'd have to put that in as a condition.
I could move to amend the petition, the garage not extend beyond the outside extension line of the garage, as shown on the plan submitted. And I think you can even say it be no, and no more than a, than one foot from the property line. I think that covers clearly, and gives us a number, because I think you may have to set a variance of not to exceed 29.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I would second that motion to amend the petition.
Actually, you have to make the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we amend the petition such that the stairway for the existing garage be such that it would be an extension of the existing footprint, and the variance request would not exceed 29 feet.
But I have a second on that.
Mr. Chairman, this is Ben Farrell. I second the motion.
Thank you. Motion's been made, second to all the petition to amend their petition for the rear yard setbacks. So, Mr. Borden? I approve. Ms. Pavlakis?
I approve.
Mr. Farrell?
I approve.
Ms. Horowitz?
I approve.
Chairman also wants to approve. Good. Thanks for pointing that out, too.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate it.
Anything else, Mr. Spell, before we ask the like of the board's interested parties?
No, thank you.
Okay. Do you have any letters in the file? Yeah. There's nothing. Okay, Timothy and Christine Downs before the board for tax assessors map six, lot 53, seeking both dimensional variance or special use permit for the purpose of making modifications and additions to their property and installing an in-ground pool. Mr. Borden?
Mr. Chairman, in regards to the special use request for a substandard lot of record, this lot is 9,580 square feet. Petitioner walked through all the criteria and has met the requirements of the ordinance, so I vote to approve the special use permit for substandard lot of record. In regards to the dimensional variances, this is essentially the petition that was heard and approved back in unanimously, back in 2016. Essentially, the only thing that's changed, well, the petitioners have abandoned their 4.4-inch front yard variance request, and they increased the lot coverage request from 9% to 11%, and that's because the ordinance changed such that the aprons of pools need to be taken into consideration. In regards to the 31% lot coverage variance, it seems excessive. However, when you consider the fact that it's in R20 zone, and the lot is only 10,000 square feet, and a lot of the coverage includes things that aren't really structures, like the pool, it really is not excessive. A lot of the existing structures already exist, and to deny the petitioner the right to improve their property, the pool is a reasonable accessory use to build in addition to the garage. It makes sense to have a stairway that will support access to that garage. It's certainly a reasonable request, and to deny them the full and beneficial use of their property would amount to a hardship more than merit to be. So I vote to approve.
Thank you. Mr. Farrell?
Mr. Chairman, this is Ben Farrell. I vote to approve the special use permit and the the dimensional variance and lot coverage variance for the reasons approved, for the reasons stated by Mr. Borden.
Thank you. Ms. Pavlakis?
For the reasons previously stated by Mr. Borden and by Mr. Borden, I approve all three applications.
Thank you. Ms. Horowitz?
This is Sue Horowitz. For reasons previously stated, I approve all applications.
Thank you. Chairman also wants to approve both the special use permit and the natural variances as well. I, along with Mr. Borden, heard this petition back in, that was back in December of 2015, so five years ago. And as Mr. Borden stated, it's actually less of a request this time than it was last time. So reasons previously stated and for reasons previously made by the board and their decision back in December of 2015 unanimously, I vote to approve as well. So it's been approved.
Thank you, everyone, as always, for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so the last item on the agenda is a petition by Rhode Island Design Build Applicant Janet Jones owner. For this particular petition, Mr. Borden has to recuse himself as he isn't a butter, so Mr. Farrell, Ms. Pavlakis, Ms. Horowitz, Ms. Waddeker, myself will hear this. Is someone from Rhode Island who designed and built on board Janet Jones? Is Janet, Janet Jones? It must be. It's a lot harder to tell. I could probably move her to-
Hello?
Is that Janet?
Yes.
Hi Janet, would this be Janet Jones?
Yes, it is.
Oh, good. Okay. I just lost her. Did we lose her? Oh, there she is. Okay, Janet, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay. We can hear you. We cannot see you, but that's okay. So do you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Could you give your full name and address, Bobber, please?
I'm Janet Jones, and I reside at 7 Conanshit Drive, Portsmouth, Rhode Island.
Okay. Ms. Jones, you're before us, seeking a special use permit to construct an addition on a non-conforming lot of record and the dimensional variance in the front yard, because you'd like to install a pool. Is that correct?
No, not at all.
Sorry. It's an addition. My bad.
Yes, an addition.
And you're seeking just the front yard, which is a proposed distance is 21 feet, so you're requesting a nine-foot variance on the front yard.
It's the side. We're on a corner lot.
Right, and I was getting to that. Oh, I can see you now. And I was getting to that. Because you're on a corner lot, you have two front yard setbacks. And if you weren't on a corner lot, this would be your side lot, correct?
Correct.
And you would meet all the other criteria and wouldn't even be here. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so basically, for lack of a better term, you're somewhat being penalized for being on a corner.
Yes.
Okay, so if I read this correctly, hardship, could you just tell us what kind of the hardship is? And why you want to put this addition on?
Well, I've been diagnosed with something that's making it more difficult for me to climb stairs. And the addition will be just one floor. And I'll be able to live on one level.
So-
Yeah, I'm 82 years old and-
God bless you. Okay, I mean, that makes perfect sense, so I will make you go on from there. Are there any member, any questions from the board at all?
No. Kathy's speaking now.
Mr. Farrell, any questions from you?
This is Ben Farrell. I have no questions.
Ms. Horowitz, any questions from you?
This is Sue Horowitz. No questions.
Okay, Mr. Waddeker, any questions from you?
Not at the present time.
Okay, Ms. Jones, I just have to go through five questions for the special use criteria, just for the record. So if this were allowed, would it still allow for adequate space for fire protection for your home?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Would it still provide adequate light and air between your building and any other building?
Yes. Yes.
Would it alter the character of the neighborhood?
No.
Would it create any setbacks less than what the other lots are?
No.
And would it impose any substantial detriment to the public or to your neighbors?
No.
Okay, thank you. I don't think we have anyone outside that wants to speak in ring. Do have a letter from a Susan and Jeff Lewis of 28 Conansia Drive that says, "We are neighbors of Janet Jones at 7 Conansia Drive. We received a letter stating she is seeking a dimensional variance for a front yard setback and a special use permit to construct an addition. Please know that we fully support Mrs. Jones's request and we hope that you will grant her the variance in the addition. Thank you, Susan and Jeff Lewis." Okay, so. Out further ado, Mike, we don't have anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would like to speak as the butter.
Well, Mr. Borden, who isn't a butter and is, would like to speak as such.
So, Mr. Borden, I, Mrs. Jones, I'm the butter wheel in the land at Borden Farm, which is from East Main Road heading back to Conansia. And I fully support your petition. I think it's a very reasonable request and I, I think you're constrained by having two front yard setbacks. And I fully support your petition and I wish you the best.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Borden. We will now vote. So as I stated, Janet Jones is before the board for Texas Accessus Map 31, Lot 100. She's seeking a nine-foot front yard variance, which is because she has two fronts in one side because she is on a corner lot. The purpose is to put an addition on so that she can effectively still remain in her home and live on one level. Other than that, she's not seeking any other variances, no lot coverage. She's testified she needs all the special use criteria. So, Mr. Farrell, would you like to vote?
This is Ben Farrell. Mr. Chairman, I vote to approve the special use permit and the dimensional variances, the dimensional variance for the front yard setback. To deny this application, to deny this applicant's request would constitute more than a mere inconvenience and inhibit Ms. Jones from continuing to reside in her property. That's all.
Thank you. Ms. Pablakis?
I vote to approve both applications for reasons that Jim not mentioned.
Thank you. Ms. Horowitz?
I vote to approve for reasons previously stated.
Thank you. Mr. Waddeker?
I vote to approve for reasons previously stated.
Thank you. Chairman also votes to approve for reasons previously stated. I agree with Mr. Farrell. Ms. Jones is being, as Mr. Borden said, constrained by having two front yard setbacks. And Ms. Jones has testified that, that's really her side lot. I think to deny the dimensional variance amounts to more than a mere inconvenience and would present a hardship to Ms. Jones, not allow her to continue to live on in her house. She also testified she does meet the special use criteria. So my vote is to approve that as well. So, Mrs. Jones, both of your petitions have been approved.
Thank you.
And I said Pablak, to you, Mrs. Jones.
Thank you.
And you have a wonderful evening.
And you too.
Thank you. Now, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion's been made by Mr. Borden to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second, Kathy's speaking.
Kathleen votes second, so I would assume unanimously we will adjourn. All is in favor.
Hi.
Dave Rock.
Hi.
Thank you for attending the special meeting. Greatly appreciate it. And a special thanks to Mike behind the scenes here. Mike's been running the video and all the virtual stuff by himself, so he's done a great job.
Yep, I'm kind of liking this. Stay at home, no driving, up in Vermont. It's wonderful.
I just want to have whatever it is you're eating, Kathy.
What's up?
Thanks, folks.
Thank you.
Good night.
Nice job, Mike. That was an excellent job. Barbara, you as well.